Good morning and welcome to our session on the Regional Conveyance Study Alternative Economics Session. I want to thank you all for taking time to spend the morning with us. My name is Sandra Curl. I'm the General Manager of the San Diego County Water Authority. The purpose of our meeting today is to talk about the long-term planning decisions that the Water Authority Board of Directors will be making, specifically options for delivering the water authorities Colorado River water or QSA water that it receives from the Imperial Valley. The question is not really about whether or not to spend money because both alternatives require paying billions of dollars over the coming decades. The question, and it's important to note and to understand that while we are paying billions, the Colorado River water supplies, our QSA water we receive is baseloaded, it is highly reliable, and is part of the baseload of the water authority supply. It's critical to supporting our economy and our quality of life since San Diego has very few natural water resources. So really, the question is what is the best alternative for San Diego County water rate pairs? Within that in mind, our public session today is going to focus on two purposes. The first is the Water Authority Board has directed staff to go out and hold workshops to provide information and to answer questions and for the public to have an opportunity to speak directly with our experts before the board takes action on whether to proceed further with studies. The second purpose of this session is to make available to the public and stakeholders the consultants the Water Authority has retained to conduct a preliminary economic review of the two alternatives. With that, I'd like to turn this over to our moderator Cindy Gomper-Greaves. We are delighted to have Cindy here today and that she was willing to come out of retirement to lead this public session. Just this past May, Cindy retired as CEO of the South County Economic Development Council as the organization's first-time full-time CEO. Cindy's collaborative hard work style fostered the growth of the South County. I'm sure many of you are familiar with her. Thanks to her tireless effort, it is a strong and respected voice that has elevated the profile of South County as a vibrant place to work and live. Before joining South County EDC, she led economic development efforts for the San Diego County as manager of its Trade and Business Development Office and had a decades-long career in broadcasting industry. So with that, thank you Cindy for being with us today, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much Sandy for that kind introduction. It's really my pleasure to be here today, mostly to help foster this very important issue. Pricing, reliability, and safety, those are all issues that we all care about, whether we're citizens wanting to turn on the tap water to maybe cook something or take a shower, or equally important is our business community. Because of the jobs that they bring, water is necessary to produce their respective products and provide their services, and that makes it an economic issue. Economic consequences of water shortages are many. As estimated by the California Department of Water Resources as part of its economic analysis of the Bay Delta Conservation Program, cutbacks in allowed water use sacrifice economic opportunity, and that is really what today's discussion is about. Our economists did a little extra work last night, and in referring to that study, they noticed that the economic impact to the local economy of simply a 5% shortage would equate to $30 million per year. Take that number to a 20% cutback in the supply of water, and the loss is estimated to be $275 million annually. It's obvious this issue is important to all of us. Now, before we dive into this issue a little deeper, I'd like to make a few introductions and also address a few housekeeping issues, but first let me thank the San Diego County Water Authority, Sandy and her great team for allowing all of us to learn more about water, but equally important is a chance to give all of us a chance to chime in and ask questions or provide comment on these very important issues. Now, on the screen, you'll notice a schedule for the next two hours where we've broken it down, so there are really two different parts to this. The first part is our economists, who I'm thrilled to hear from, they're going to give us a great overview and tell us all about their study, which is directed towards the economic issues of this planned, I should say, of this proposed phase. Now, in addition to that, the second part of this is a question and answer session. We're going to lead off today with a little bit of background on this study by Deputy General Manager Dan Denham. Dan's going to tee up the topic for today's meeting, which focuses again on the economic considerations around this potential project. Then we're going to turn it over to our two veteran economists who have deep backgrounds in water issues. I'm very much looking forward to hearing from them. And at the conclusion of their remarks, they're going to shift over into a Q and A session to give you a chance to ask the important questions. Now, on that note, you are welcome to submit questions during the presentation. The San Diego County Water Authority staff is gathering those questions during the program, and then we'll be asking our panelists to address them during the second half of today's study session. While there are numerous questions about this proposal, we want to remind you to stay focused during the next hour on questions that relate to today's study session, and that is economic considerations. Now, you can send your questions about economic issues via the chat function in the Team platform during the study session. Here's how to do it. Once you're on the live event screen on Teams, click the question icon at the top of the right side, then follow the steps in the next page to sign into the meeting and submit your questions. Now, if you have your shoes logging in, just pick up the phone and call the Water Authority. They can be reached at 858-522-6700, or just send them a quick email. They can be found at wateracademy@stcwa.org. Now, for those of you who are unable to submit questions through the Teams function, you can submit them by email, again, to wateracademy@stcwa.org, but please include your name and your affiliation. The Water Authority is planning to provide written responses to all the questions it receives pertaining to today's topic. If we don't have time for some reason to address all of them before the end of the session, they are going to respond in written form and post them on their website in a few days. Additionally, the recording along with those questions are going to be posted there also. Now, first, I wanted to say a special thank you. During these COVID times, it's extra hard to get the public involved, to inform the public, and allow them an opportunity to go ahead and ask questions. So I do want to give the San Diego County Water Authority an extra word of thanks for allowing us to do this COVID-compliant event. With that, let me turn it over to the San Diego County Water Authority Deputy General Manager, Dan Denham.
Thank you Cindy, and good morning everyone for joining us virtually. I just want to acknowledge right up front the contractual and technical complexity associated with the background of the Water Authority's Colorado River supplies, and of course, the transportation necessary to get the water to our region. I will only be able to scratch the surface of the decades worth of history associated with these supplies. However, I believe a little background is necessary, as Cindy mentioned, to kind of put things in context. But really plain and simple, the Water Authority's mission is to make sure that the region has enough water, and that was established by the state legislature in the 1940s. As you know, that's not easy. The last year our region had enough local water supplies to meet our local water demands was 1946. So it goes without saying that in our role as regional wholesale water provider, we have to look ahead. We have to look way ahead because it takes decades to turn generational projects into reality. This is true for all of the large-scale forward-thinking Water Authority and member agency initiatives throughout our region, such as reuse, desalination, or emergency storage. Next slide, please. Three decades ago, we started laying the groundwork for a water conservation and transfer agreement that today is known as the Quantification Settlement Agreement, or our QSA water supplies, as you will hear referenced throughout the day. These high-priority supplies from the Colorado River are the result of on-farm conservation efforts in the Imperial Valley, as well as large-scale infrastructure projects that the Water Authority helps fund and construct through partnerships with Imperial, Coachella, the U.S. Department of the Interior, and the State of California. The 30-plus agreements that make up the QSA serve as the legal framework for what is really a multi-billion dollar enterprise. The QSA and the Water Authority's role is critical in managing the Colorado River, which the seven basin states depend on within our own state. It helps California live within its Colorado River water entitlement, and of course, the QSA helps lessen imports from the environmentally sensitive Bay Delta. Today, our QSA water provides a cost-effective base supply to our region, meaning it helps to meet 50% of our region's demands. It's our largest source of supply. It's also our cheapest source of supply and lowers the melded rate of untreated supplies, which of course helps support our member agencies' local water supply development projects as they incrementally build and diversify the region's water supply portfolio. This is an important distinction in that the QSA water, it is complementary to existing and future local water supply development projects that are planned by the Water Authority's member agencies. Next slide, please. So we are facing decisions today that are equal parts supply and conveyance. We are looking so far out, more than 25 years from now, due to significant pending agreement milestones that must be thoughtfully managed. The Imperial Irrigation District, or IID, is conserved water transfer. The initial term ends in 2047, which can be extended if both parties agree. So that's the water component of the discussion, the transportation component, known as our exchange agreement with the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, or MWD, ends in 2047, with no option in the contract to extend. So simply put, that means if the San Diego region wants to continue to benefit from our QSA supplies, the exchange agreement with MWD would have to be negotiated in its entirely. So this is really the crux of the matter today. The Water Authority Board must decide now in order to be prepared for and protect our future generations. We're working to provide them with the information they need to make an informed decision. Next slide, please. So again, fundamentally, we have two choices to receive that conserved water from the QSA. We can continue to rent space in another system, or we can build our own conveyance system to deliver those supplies. This is effectively what this feasibility study is, assessing our alternatives by analyzing and comparing the two alternatives for delivery of our QSA supply. That's my last slide, so Cindy, I will throw it back to you.
Thank you, Dan. I know there's a lot of history to unpack, but we're really here today to focus on the future. And as you said, there's two choices. So let's bring in the two independent economists hired to assess some of the fundamental questions related to these two choices. We're also joined by Kevin Davis, the RCS Phase A Project Director for Black and Beach, who led the technical analysis update and cost estimate refinement for Phase A. While Kevin will not be presenting today, he will be available during the Q and A session to answer any questions that might be pertaining to costs. Now, our speakers today are Bob Campbell and Rodney Smith. Bob Campbell is President of Water Resource Consultants, WRC, founded in 2008. WRC provides planning, management, financial, and rate expert advice for public and private entities. Prior to founding WRC, Bob was employed at the San Diego County Water Authority from 1991 to 2003 as a Chief Financial Officer, and later as the Executive Director in the General Manager's Office overseeing the development, acquisition, and implementation of new diversified water resources. He directed a two-year agency cost of service study and rate restructuring process that resulted in more diversified and stable revenue sources. Bob also served as a principal water authority and negotiator for the 2003 Colorado River Quantification Settlement Agreement, including the allocation agreement for conserved water from the All-American and Coachella Canal lining projects, and terms and pricing for the IID water transfer and MWD exchange agreements. Before that, he was employed at the Metropolitan Water District from 1970 to 1990 in various engineering and financial management levels, and as a financial services manager directing preparation of the agency's annual budget, rates and charges, and debt issuance for capital programs. In his role at MWD, he co-managed a 1984 revenue and rate restructuring process with the agency's Board of Directors that resulted in substantial changes to MWD's water and tax rate policies, and adoption of more stable and fixed revenue sources. Bob holds a Bachelor's of Arts and Master of Public Administration degrees from the California State University of Northridge. One of our other speakers is Rodney Smith. Rodney is President of Stratagon Inc., a strategic planning and economics consulting firm specializing in the economics, finance, and policy of water resources. He is involved as an advisor in the acquisition of water rights throughout the Western United States, and in the sale and leasing of water rights and water supplies to public and private sector water users. The firsthand experience in the decades-long development of water markets provides industry expertise to identify the best candidates and navigate related public policy issues. He's represented the Imperial Irrigation District in the negotiations of the Long-Term Water Conservation and Transfer Agreement with the San Diego County Water Authority and related quantifications settlement agreement. Rod received a PhD in economics from the University of Chicago, and a Bachelor of Arts in economics from the University of California at Los Angeles. Prior to making a full-time commitment to the private sector, he was a professor of economics at Claremont McKenna College for 15 years, Director of the Lowell Institute of Political Economy, and a member of the editorial board of the Economic Inquiry and Professional Economics Research Journal of the Western Economics Association. He started his career after graduate school as an economist at the Rand Corporation, a nice first job. That's where he participated in a study commissioned by the California Legislature on the role of markets to address California's water problems. Thank you both for being here today and sharing your expertise. Bob and Rodney, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you Cindy for that introduction. Rod and I were retained to offer an opinion on the reasonableness of the Water Authority's staff's rate assumptions for MWD, and also to identify factors that could likely influence future projections of MWD rates and charges. Rod and I are here today to explain the scope of the issue that we have been asked to address and cover, what was concluded in Phase A. Next slide, please. Again, the issue and what was concluded in Phase A, and also what additional economic due diligence is necessary in Phase B to help inform the Water Authority Board of Directors in making a decision going forward. Now, our goal in this presentation and in the Q and A that will follow is to open a transparent dialogue, to invite all of our stakeholders to share any questions, concerns, and inputs on the process and analysis in order to develop a common understanding of the facts and the economic risk consequences that surround each alternative. Now, given that the QSA, as has been mentioned, is a backbone supply for the region, and we can elaborate later on that point as well, but at this point, the issue is, should the Water Authority Board conduct a feasibility study of alternatives for future delivery of QSA water to help inform the board of the next steps of their decision? Now, which alternative to pick should follow after this next phase is completed? And our scope is simply to look at the conveyance alternatives. This is not a decision about adding any new costs, but rather comparing the stream of payments in today's dollars between the two alternatives, which are before the board. Which makes more economic sense and is the least cost risk from a reliability standpoint? To continue to rent from MWD, or to construct and own a Water Authority conveyance system? Next slide, please. So, Alternative 1, rent with MWD. Now, in Alternative 1, let me emphasize, there is no rent control. There is no public utilities commission that regulates the prices that MWD charges and the prices that San Diego County Water Authority receives or pays. Prices are not fixed, but they float, and they're set by a voting majority of the Board of MWD, of which San Diego County Water Authority is a minority of 18%. Now, the rate structure is determined by MWD, and costs are allocated to rates according to a legal system, which gives deference to the public agency, or in this case, to MWD. Now, history has been that agencies favor their self-interests, hence water profiles among member agencies is important to build alliances. Now, cost at MWD have increased 30%, primarily due to the variable of lower demands due to conservation and member agency local resource development, and we're going to discuss this a little bit later on in some future slides. Now, under the current exchange agreement terms, it's projected that San Diego will pay nearly $28 billion in today's dollars through 2112, which is the final term of the QSA allocation agreement. Now, provided that MWD agrees to extend the current term of the exchange agreement beyond 2047, which is not under the control of the Water Authority. Now, in the end, San Diego does not own the house, so to speak. It only has a right to an allocation of MWD water, which has its own reliability concerns during shortages, which MWD has asserted really has no value. Next slide, please. So Alternative 3, own an RCS. Now, I like to look at this as own the house. San Diego and its member agencies will determine who benefits and who pays under this alternative. There is also an opportunity for partnerships, such as for energy, to reduce the cost of pumping in the RCS, and other partnership opportunities as well. Now, the risk of floating prices and uncertainty is reduced in this alternative since costs are fixed for debt service, and really, the only thing is there is some inflation for ONM in energy. Also importantly, the risk of non-renewal by MWD is eliminated and preserves the pathway to the low-cost QSA supplies. Now, the costs of this owning the house, so to speak, are estimated at nearly $26 billion, which is still well within the ballpark of Alternative 1 to rent. Now, in the end, the San Diego County Water Authority owns an asset with real value and increasing value, and I like to say the house is paid for at the end of the mortgage, and a pathway is secured to continue conveying low-cost QSA supplies. Next slide, please. So, looking back at where we've been and what the Phase A conclusions were, the QSA water is the low-cost base supply. When you look at the 200,000 acre feet that comes from the IID transfer water, and the canal lining water supplies that are conserved through the lining of the All-American Canal, the overall melded average of the, or weighted average of these two supplies is currently under $1,000 an acre foot, around $966. This is less than half of what the lowest marginal cost local supplies are available today. And I want to say that the low-hanging fruit has been picked, and what remains on the margin is going to be very costly within the San Diego region, and is also at MWD. In other words, well north of 200,000 acre feet in today's dollars to look at reclamation and desalination supplies. Now, another important point is that the QSA water is what we call platinum in terms of reliability. It has one of the highest shortage priorities in California's 4.4 million acre foot entitlement, and its priority is on a level with IID's 3.1 million acre foot third priority rights. And yes, that is ahead of MWD's 550,000 acre feet fourth priority right, and San Diego's QS water is not subject to MWD shortage allocation decisions unlike San Diego's or any member agency's full-service purchases are from MWD. Another important thing is, as we've explained already in Phase A comparisons of the two alternatives, whether to rent or to own, the RCS is competitive with the MWD exchange and more costly local resource production, and I say, the opportunities remain to reduce costs further through energy partnerships or less costly blending alternatives in place of treatment, for example, as a source. Next slide, please. Now, history serves as a guide in looking at the 80-year price history of MWD's rates, and both Rod and I independently looked at the historical record over the last 80-year period since Metropolitan has been delivering water from 1940. And this graph that you see before you illustrates the steady upward climb in the rates over this period. Now, let's look at the rate history since 1960 in particular on this graph. The solid line on the top of the graph indicates the real MWD water rate, and the bars below that are the annual growth rates, the growth in rates. Now, if you look at the bottom of the chart, the important thing to concentrate on here is that there have been three eras, significant eras, in price increases at MWD. The first one is in 1960 to 1984, and in that line where it says MWD water rates, the cumulative annual growth during that period was 11.3%. Now, that's a significant increase in rates, and it was attributed to the fact that MWD was transitioning from depending almost entirely on tax rates to placing more of their revenue requirements on water rates. And also, the region was growing significantly. Population was increasing substantially during this period, and facilities had to be constructed also during this period, and so capital costs were increasing, and rates had to increase significantly at that point. Now, in 1985 to 2000, the system had essentially been constructed or built, and it was just a matter of maintaining the infrastructure. And so, the MWD rates basically continued to increase with the rate of inflation, or about 3%. After 2007 and beginning in 2008, there were significant factors that came into play at MWD. These pertained around the shortages in water supply due to droughts, and the introduction of local water supplies into the service area by its member agencies. And as a result, there was a decline that began to occur in MWD's water demands, and the pace of annual rate increases, as demand goes down, rates go up, and the pace of that ended up, the cumulative annual growth rate went up about 6.4% within with inflation at that time only being about slightly over 1.5%. So, in that last period, 2008 to 20, we've seen the real MWD water rate increase by 4.7% above inflation. Now, cumulatively over that period, from 1960 to 2020, the MWD rates have increased almost at a 7% annual escalation rate, well above the 3.7% inflation rate. In other words, in real terms, the margin of the rate increase above inflation for MWD has been about 3.1%. Next slide, please. Now, history is informative, but Rod and I have opined that MWD must look at some other key drivers in the MWD decisions and future protection data that's going to drive MWD's rates over the next half-century or more. Now, the marginal cost of these key drivers that you see listed on this slide are significant in some cases. And another thing that we must also keep in mind is that, under the exchange deliveries, San Diego will incur a proportional share of about 25% of these costs through the payment of the MWD wheeling rate. Now, in many cases, the projects that you see here that are planned are needed to really defend what exists today from MWD's two water supply sources, the SWAP and the Colorado River. And as noted, the deteriorating MWD yields from the Colorado River and the SWAP are significant, and we'll elaborate on that later. But water yields are amenable at a significantly high marginal cost under many of these alternatives. And I'm not going to talk about each one of these, but I would like to enumerate on a couple significant ones. The first one being that surrounds the Delta Conveyance Project, which is a project that is being considered by the state of California to improve flows in the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta. Now, MWD is a prominent member of the state water project, taking over 50%, or almost 50% of the deliveries from the state water project. And they will be called upon and expected to be a significant participant if this project goes forward. Now, the estimates of this project right now, in today's dollars, is $16 billion. That's what it'd be, $16 billion. And Metropolitan has estimated that they will probably pay about 2/3 of the cost of that, anywhere from that. But it could be up to $11 billion. And that will primarily be spread to its rate payers and member agencies. Now, we don't know exactly how Met may allocate those costs, but if you look at San Diego's share of that, it being around 25%, it's going to be a significant cost pickup for the San Diego County Water Authority, at least $2.5 billion. Another significant project up there is the MWD Recycled Regional Water Program. And this is a program to recycle water up in the LA region at one of the large wastewater plants up there, and to basically treat that water, clean it up in tertiary treatment, and then put it into, and mix it into either groundwater basins or possibly some surface water reservoirs, but principally groundwater basins. And then, it will be potable water. It's a very necessary project. MWD is on record as moving forward with this. They've completed the feasibility studies. This, again, is not cheap. It's over $3 billion. And a large part of this program will be to build pipelines to move that water into the groundwater storage basins. And so, it's expected there will be some significant transportation cost to that. And if that is, say, half of that is allocated to transportation, then we're talking about another $1.5 billion that will go on the MWD transportation rate. Again, the San Diego County Water Authority being 25% of those costs would pick up nearly 3/4 of a billion dollars of those costs. And so, just in those two programs, the Delta and the Regional Recycle Water Program, Metropolitan will be spending a significant billions of dollars. And likewise, the San Diego County Water Authority will be picking up a significant proportional share of those costs, anywhere between $2.5 billion to $3.5 billion, again, depending on how MWD allocates those costs. So, as you can see, the challenges are great. We have to look at a lot of these key drivers in order to assess the reasonableness of the, what to expect and project in MWD's future rates. And there are also other factors that we will be discussing as we go forward from here on the next slide. So, next slides, please. At this point, I'd like to turn the discussion over to Rod Smith, who is going to discuss the Phase B economic due diligence that we view as necessary.
Well, thank you, Bob. One of the reasons why there's such an emphasis on looking at Metropolitan's whole financial rate structure is this feeds into the payments the authority makes through the exchange agreement. Now, as I looked at this when I was retained by the authority to share my thoughts about the economics of the alternatives, I really viewed this as really an economic due diligence exercise, which I routinely do for a lot of public-private sector clients on investment opportunities. Past may or may not be a prelude to future. The future will depend on what, in fact, occurs, given the fundamentals of any organization. In the case of Metropolitan Water District, it's really about their fundamentals. That requires us to be looking not only at the future rates and supply reliability, but also a comparative analysis with the Water Authority. At the end, as Sandy mentioned, the question is about how will the authority going forward spend billions of dollars? Is it going to be through a continuation of an exchange agreement with Metropolitan? It would have to be negotiated and extended past 2047 or versus the alternative of regional conveyance system. Given that we have to look so far out in the future, we have to recognize with humility, we don't have a crystal ball. So, what that requires us to do is look into the fundamentals of the economics of the situation, and we will find we have a lot of risk factors, which require rigorous analysis. Fortunately, in the last 30 years, with the explosion of IT and whatnot and computer capacity, there's been a major development in the ability to use risk assessment and control framework to address the uncertainty of future projections. And we will show how this can be integrated into a final decision-making model for board consideration. Next slide, please. Bob went through a bit about the history of Met's cost structure. And going forward, there's a lot of things to be considered. We have the cost escalation of their existing assets. Like many water agencies, Metropolitan finds itself in an asset replacement program going forward as it relates to all of their infrastructure. As Bob mentioned, there's a cost of new water supplies, multi-billion-dollar regional commitments, and so on. On the energy side, of course, with the water industry being energy-intensive, we have to think about the future in terms of California's escalating energy market. All these things have to be put on the table, picked apart, and analyzed. Next slide, please. We also have the issue, as Bob mentioned, about Metropolitan's water demands. As he mentioned, there's member agency supply diversification going. With the COVID-19 pandemic, we have a recession that we need to think about the consequences of that. And of course, as an economist, we always, economists always point out how water pricing, as it increases, will also reduce demands. Next slide, please. What we've done here is just taken the recent history of Metropolitan's water sales since 2007. We're looking at that third phase that Bob mentioned in Met's rate history. We provide two types of water sales. Metropolitan, in its annual report, includes the Water Authority's QSA water in its sales, because, of course, they receive payments through the exchange agreement. And also, I show what is the Metropolitan sales without the exchanges. And what you'll see, there's been certainly a market decline over this period. In 2015, the Water Authority retained Straticon to do an economic study of the drivers of Metropolitan water sales. And certainly, pricing has a huge impact on this. But there's also other factors that are driving Metropolitan water sales. Most prominently, on a year-to-year basis, depending on the yield that Los Angeles gets from its investments out of the Owens Valley. When they get more water out of Owens Valley, they reduce their purchases of Met. And of course, when they get less water coming out of Owens Valley, they increase their expenditures. Next slide, please. Certainly, a risk factor also has to do with Metropolitan's water supply reliability. There's various components related to the Colorado River in terms of the Colorado River's own sustainability. Of course, as Bob has already mentioned, the Authority's water supplies has the priority of the Imperial Irrigation District, which is senior to Metropolitan. There's also continued demands on the Bay Delta. And of course, we also have issues related to the speed and magnitude of climate change. Now, why does supply reliability matter? As Cindy mentioned in her statements, that water shortages have economic consequences, and she certainly covered that very well. In addition, water supply shortages also have financial consequences. As true of all water agencies, Metropolitan Water District is dominated by fixed costs, so that as your water supply becomes less reliable, you have more increasingly large and frequent claims on financial reserves to draw down to help pay your bills when you're short of water. Next slide, please. There's a myriad of facts to do, and what we're going to do in these next few slides is just sort of give you some highlights of the types of factual analysis necessary to conduct reasonable economic due diligence. This data comes from the annual reports of the Bureau of Reclamation to the United States Supreme Court in its administration of the Arizona v. California decision from 1964. We have the Metropolitan water supply, which has been water conveyed through the Colorado River Aqueduct historically since the Supreme Court decision. And then also, starting in 2003, the amount of QSA water that is conveyed through the Colorado River Aqueduct. What you'll see here is that pre-2003, Metropolitan was living in the world of surplus water off the Colorado River, and often was routinely taking up the 1.2 million acre-feet of water annually. In fact, in the 1990s, Metropolitan had a reliably-plus program or a study which claimed they foresaw 1.2 million acre-feet of water occurring indefinitely as far as the eye could see. It turned out that that vision missed the mark a bit, because in 2003, as you can see, there was a loss in, permanent loss in that water. Next slide, please. The other major water asset of Metropolitan, of course, is its contractual claims to the state water project. This provides the history of what has been the declaration by California Department of Water Resources of what final allocation of the state project will be. Until 1990, of course, pretty much large, high allocations were declared each year. In this time period, by the way, water demands, contractual demands on the state project were not, were increasing to their current maximums now. And so, that was a period of really relatively low demands on the project as the project was brought on. Of course, we have the historic drought in 1990 that prompted the local community here to seek for diversification from Metropolitan's reliance on Metropolitan. And as you can see, there's been sort of the Delta saga about the environmental consequences of taking water from the north to the south. Has, you know, has started to see a steady decline in the allocations of the state water project. It's interesting, in 2009, legislature passed the Delta Reform Act, which says, "Let's continue to reduce reliance of exports from north to south." And since then, the 10-year running average of the allocations declined from about 65% to where it stands at half, 50% today. Next slide, please. This is Bureau of Reclamation estimates of what's the natural flow of the Colorado River at Lee's Ferry, which is in northern Arizona, nine miles south of its border with Utah. What the Bureau of Reclamation does here is try to estimate from records, if there was no use of Colorado River water, what would be the natural flow at this point of Lee's Ferry, which is the dividing point between the upper and lower basin. What you can see, when the Colorado River contact was being negotiated in early part of the 20th century, it was signed in 1922, there was very high-flow years, and that led to the division of 7.5 million acre-feet for use in the upper basin and 7.5 million acre-feet for use in the lower basin, for 15 million acre-feet. In 1994, the US entered into a treaty with the Republic of Mexico, which provides 1.5 million acre-feet of entitlement to Mexico. So, now we have claims of 16.5 million acre-feet. If you throw in the fact that there's evaporation at anywhere from 2 to 3 million acre-feet a year, you're going to see sort of the claims are running up to 20 million. During the 20th century, the average natural flows had been around 15 million acre-feet. This solid line down here says, "Based on scientific studies in the 90s from Tree Ring studies, they believe the long-term average of natural flow in the Colorado River is 13.5 million acre-feet." I want to call your attention to the far right of the diagram. What you can see, roughly since the alleged drought of this century, the actual average flow of the Colorado River is estimated to be pretty much at the Tree Ring estimates. So, what does that mean going forward? We have the potential of looking at two different visions of the world going forward. Are we in sort of the drought that everyone's been talking about on the Colorado River for now the last 10 years? Or have we simply reverted to the long-term average of Tree Ring studies? There's huge strategic implications of those two views of the world. Next slide, please. Again, the exchange agreement terms are being generated by Met's rate saving policy. So, therefore, one has to subject to analysis the future of Metropolitan. And we note that in 2003, Met had changed its rate structure, and certainly, it's prudent. If one's thinking about the long-term through 2112 into the next century, one needs to also look at what's the economic incentives to a member agencies of Met to change its rate structure. This requires use of their current cost-of-service studies, underlooking, identifying their underlying principles, projecting out what the future looks like for Met, to analyze what's the economic interest of various member agencies of a restructuring of rates to generate expectations about about the probability and timing of restructure changes. And of course, right now, Metropolitan's talking about increasing property taxes. Next slide, please. So there's a lot of factors to try to put on the table and sort through. One of the things we know about humans, we're not clairvoyant, okay? We have different expectations of the future, and that's where risk planning comes in. Risk planning starts with risk identification. What are all the various RICs factors that will influence the future of Metropolitan? Once you identify your risks, you have to start modeling them. What's the impact of different outcomes? And what's the likelihood of these things occurring? And that then leads to risk response planning. What's really key here is to see the feedback into risk monitoring. All models of the future are subject to being wrong. So it's very important, not only to model answers to questions, it's really important to monitor reality to projections. And that will then turn feedback into how you respond to these risks as they unfold. Next slide, please. Bob and I are pretty firm in our view that each alternative must be assessed with the same rigor. Regional conveyance system versus a reliance on exchange agreement with Metropolitan. I call this the circle of life diagram, because as you can see, there's a lot of considerations that need to be brought together. Not only do we have to have a good understanding of the future of the Colorado River and the state water project, how is that integrated through Metropolitan's storage programs to generate supply reliability? What is the future range of outcomes of Metropolitan's water rates and its structure? And also driving this will be what are the water demands going forward facing both the Water Authority and Metropolitan? That in turn, of course, will be influenced by pricing, which gets you into what's the regional conveyance systems cost modeling. And then, of course, Phase B will develop a finance plan about how these, how a project could be financed, which will feed into the Water Authority rate model. The reason why we don't put line or arrows going into the decision model, we view these as all the types of considerations that have to be balanced by boards as they reach their decision, and that's for the Board of Directors to decide. Next slide, please. Here's the important thing to remember about where the authority is. Regional conveyance is still a feasibility study only. No one's breaking ground yet, or, you know, conducting environmental review. Phase A dealt with some very important issues related to project definition, feasibility, and estimate of cost, but there was a limit, but it still has a limited number of issues. They had to focus. Bob and I believe Phase B should include a complete economic analysis and risk assessment of the comparison of the two alternatives. To proceed to Phase B is not to approve a project, as we say here, environmental reviews down the road. And as all boards that Stratocan's ever advised over its many decades, it's ultimately up to the board, who has the fiduciary obligation, to ensure a complete review of all And Bob and I are here to answer your questions and receive your input. Dialogue is good.
Excellent. Thank you, Rodney and Bob. Thank you both for your in-depth review. It's a complex and intriguing issue, and I'm sure the audience has many questions. As a matter of fact, I see numerous questions coming in now. Before we jump right into the questions, which is actually my favorite part of any forum, I want to make sure that those viewing online understand how they can submit questions. So to submit a question, just a reminder, they need to be surrounding this study, which is about the economic issues surrounding this proposal. You just click the question icon in the team's computers program that you're looking at now, or you can email your questions to wateracademy@sdwa.org. So for now, let's just jump right in there. First off, just protocol, Rodney will defer to you for the first one, and then you can defer to Bob. And then, Dan, I already see we have a question coming up for you in the near future. So Rodney, what happens if we do absolutely nothing? We talked about two alternatives, but there are any, I'm sure you're aware already, is any study, there's always what if we did nothing? Would you answer that? And what's that for us?
Sure. If what you mean by doing nothing is that you'll maintain, you'll stay with the exchange agreement, okay? The existing exchange agreement with Metropolitan for the IID water terminates in 2047, and the canal lining water will be conveyed through 2112. So I guess the do-nothing alternative is to rely on the existing exchange agreement. As true in water world, there's always sort of nuances here. It's possible you can negotiate an extension of an exchange agreement with Metropolitan as well. Generally, Stratocan advises its clients to always assess its alternatives before you enter the negotiation room. Bob, do you want to add to that? To help negotiate the exchange agreement?
Yeah, I think here, the real issue is that you don't want to squander what is really a very prized asset that you have and getting a very competitive cost of water supply from the Imperial Valley. And so that's certainly something you want to avoid in anything that you don't squander that or strand that asset.
Great, thank you. Next question is, at the heart of this issue is a projection on MWD's future rates. Has the Water Authority been unreasonable in projecting rate increases for MWD?
Well, what they did in Phase A is that they looked at history. And that's a good place to start, because you have over, like, the chart we said goes back to 1960 only. So for the last 60 years, Met has a track record. And to start with that track record is reasonable as a first-cut analysis. But as Bob and I both told the authority, going forward, you have to unpack the reality of the future, not the past. And so that's why we emphasize the factors that we think would help inform forecasts of the future.
Yes, and I might add that while history is informative, what happens in the future is paramount in this type of an analysis. And what we do know is that there are certain things that lie ahead, decisions that MWD has to make in determining what their revenue requirements are going to be and what their future rates are going to be. And those are not, and I want to emphasize, they're not simple issues. There's a lot of analysis going forward for all of those factors that we identified on that one slide with key drivers. And so that's going to require a lot of in-depth look and further analysis in order to properly model what can happen with those rates going forward. And at the end of the day, we may come out and say, look, it's kind of a break even. And then it begins to come to the point where we have to consider additional risks that might occur under each alternative to help inform the board's decision.
Great, thank you. Our next question is, what items do you think are critical for the Water Authority to address in Phase B, should that move forward?
Well, I think a few. We certainly gave a presentation about the economic due diligence and risk assessment. That's certainly one. I think the other thing is you have to start thinking about the terms and conditions, if any, that you can extend your agreement with IID.
Great, thank you. How could various partnerships impact the economics of the regional conveyance system?
Well, as I look at it, initially, my first reaction within seven seconds was the energy issue. Imperial Valley is blessed with geothermal resources. I happen to know that Warren Buffett's Cal Energy is sitting on a lot of unexplored assets. And so to think of, and also, an Australian company has come in to develop geothermal in the valley. So I think looking at local sourcing of power is probably, to use Bob's words, the low-hanging fruit. I think there's other possibilities. I know from my many years, although I haven't represented IID in probably a decade now, the valleys have always been interested in water storage. So to the extent there's storage opportunities there that could be bundled to help not only the operation of the Authority's project, but also help IID better manage their water supplies, I see that as another potential partnership opportunity. The third one is in Borrego Springs. I have gotten calls from landowners up there about their dire water problem. And, you know, there may be some partnership opportunities there as well.
Rodney, you mentioned partnerships, and this question, I think, jumps right into that. The economics of regional conveyance assume approval and cooperation with the IID Board, and extension of the water transfer beyond 2047. How certain is the Water Authority of this happening? And what happens if it doesn't happen?
Well, I can't speak for the Water Authority. But in all the deals I've put together, you have to talk to the other parties. So as a result, I think there's a, I was struck actually by something when I was representing IID and negotiating the 1988 agreement with San Diego, early drafts of that agreement had reference to a potential facility like this. And the IID Board unanimously told me to yank that out of the agreement, and you won't find it in the agreement. Now we go to 2020, and I understand the general manager has expressed the interest of the IID Board to look into this project. So that is a sea change in 25 years.
Yeah, I might add, I think having been involved considerably in the original negotiation of the agreement, and having been out there and spent countless hours with IID and the constituents that live out there, there was a huge concern 20 years ago that there was going to be a big water grab out of the Imperial Valley, another Chinatown, so to speak, that would harm the valley. And I think we worked through a lot of those issues. We were able to mitigate the socioeconomic impacts. And over the past 20 years, I think the Water Authority has done a great deal to build trust with the citizens and the board in IID. And I think both sides have, through building that trust, I think the Imperial Irrigation District has realized the great value that the water transfer brings to their economy. And likewise, the Water Authority realizes the great value that the transfer brings in reliability and a regionally low-cost water supply. So building on that past history and looking at the current track record, I would think that prospects in renegotiating that particular transfer agreement should be a lot less bumpy than they were 20 years ago.
So to that point, could the IID decide in 2047 to no longer supply the QSA water to CWA?
Actually, there's a mutuality. The 2047 term is the initial term, and it's to be extended by the mutual agreement of the parties.
There we go. Thank you. Just a reminder to our listening audience, the County Water Authority is going to be collecting the questions and providing the written responses on their website in a few days. We want to encourage you to keep sending in questions. I still have quite a few more to get through here, but we want to make sure that nobody is left out. So please, send in your questions. Even if we don't have time to address all the questions today, they will get a written response on the web. With that, we're going to go to our next question, which is, is there a hybrid between owning and leasing?
Well, I guess if Met wants to enter into a negotiation where they convey, I guess, capacity rights, that, yeah, you could, in the natural gas industry, for example, interstate gas pipelines are have subdivided interests. So you'll have a company that sort of operates the thing, but there's multiple owners of designated capacity. In some sense, that's sort of like the model of the state project as well.
Yes, and I might add that MWD does have a track record of having done in the past some leases or using their assets and transferring them to member agencies to cooperatively use. This has been done up in Orange County. And quite frankly, MWD has an asset that has significant unused capacity. And so thinking out of the box, it may make some sense that there be a hybrid of some sort, where you may have a lease or a lease ownership partnership on that aqueduct between the Water Authority and the Metropolitan Water District.
Great, thank you. I understand there's another similar study, the independent member agency study, and it comes to some very different conclusions, different from the Water Authority's staff and consultant analysis. Have you reviewed that? And when do you think that will be available to the public?
Well, actually, both Bob and I submitted a letter to the Water Authority in August, which was included in the board materials for the August 27th board meeting. And I believe you can find both our letters on the website. So therefore, certainly, I put together a 41-page letter, so I'm in print on the response. If I may say, some of the higher-level issues were issues about what, you know, what time, how, what time horizon should you look at? Should it be a relatively short-time horizon or a longer-term horizon? And as you mentioned, I started my career at the RAND Corporation, which was the beginning of life cycle cost analysis for the military that's now permeated throughout the world. And you look at the useful life of an asset. So you got to look long-term, especially for capital-intensive investment. So there is issues there. Secondly, they had a suspicion that Met's going to finally get its financial house in order, although the pathway of how and when that would happen was less unspecified. But I do agree with that study, that you have to be looking at the fundamentals of the future, not simply the past.
Thank you. Another question from our listening audience, are there stranded costs to own your own versus leasing? And were those costs factored into your projections?
Well, I think that is something that has to be addressed in Phase B. You always have what is known in the financial world as what's the terminal value of an investment? So the question is, what do you have in 2112? Well, you have some infrastructures. You'll have to think through, you know, what is the value of that? It may also be that that infrastructure will continue to be replenished, and depending on who knows what's happening, you may have a further extension of the IID agreement. Moreover, by that time, there will be other players coming in who have available Colorado River water, including the Republic of Mexico. So there's a lot of options out there long-term.
I would add one additional thought, and that is that you also have an asset out there with the lining of the All-American Canal and the conserved water that comes from that. And that extends out to 2112. So you definitely want to be able to preserve that. And MWD is obligated by the exchange agreement to convey that water. But one of the concerns, of course, would be looking out, again, you have the issue of, well, what's the price of that wheeling going to be? And so certainly, you have to be mindful Um, and, uh, so certainly, um, you have to be mindful of, uh, you've got two sets of assets out there, uh, potentially a pipeline and a water supply. And you want, you don't want to end up stranding either one.
Thank you. My understanding is that all the reports are posted on the San Diego County Water Authority's website, so I encourage you to, uh, check that out and, and read more about those. Thank you both very much. Um, our next question is, what is the Water Authority paying MWD to transport its QSA supplies to San Diego?
I think this year it's $482 acre foot.
Great, thank you. Um, Kevin, are we ready? We've got one for you here. This is for Kevin Davis. Kevin is with Black and Beach. Please describe in detail the economic issues the Water Authority plans to investigate in Phase B studies. Phase A studies investigate the feasibility of RCS and project construction costs, but say little about RCS's economic feasibility as they neither address externa, external, I cannot say the word, external issues, there we go, nor associated probable risks. While Phase B studies address economic issues associated with favored Route 3A, for example, Route 3A through Borrego appears from Phase A studies to place an annual multimillion-dollar burden on Borrego irrigators and create potentially tens of millions of dollars in capital costs and additional annual O and M expenses for use of the 20,000 AFY turnout for Borrego. Kevin, we turn it over to you.
Okay, that's, that's got a lot of things to address and I'll, I'll try and do that in two phases here. Um, first is you asked, the question asks, what is the, uh, plan for the economic analysis in Phase B, um, identifies that we didn't do in a detailed economic analysis in Phase A, which is true. Um, so first of all, the Water Authority will be, uh, performing the economic analysis as they did in Phase A. But there is a, a handoff, if you will, between the costs and the, um, annual O and M and replacement costs, both capital and O and M, uh, to the Water Authority. And those are informed, uh, also by, by just the physical nature of the project as well as risk. And so the, the question asks about risks and how will we address that? Um, our, my understanding is that we will provide, um, an updated risk assessment of the entire project, us being Black and Beach. We will give those risk assessments and the, um, uh, our risk, uh, assessment of costs associated with those risks, that is, to the Water Authority. And they will do a probabilized, uh, risk assessment in their economic analysis to basically create an array of potential future outcomes. So that's the, um, the part A of that question. The second part addresses, uh, what, uh, economic impact, uh, will RCS Alternative 3A have on the Borrego Springs area? And so it's important to understand that, uh, Borrego Springs was identified as a potential partner in Phase A, but that's all we did was identify them as a potential partner. And so the, the cost estimates that we prepared in Phase A were solely for the Water Authority's costs. So for example, um, the pipeline that would go either near or through Borrego, the Borrego Springs area would all be paid for by the Water Authority. The annual, um, cost for O and M and replacement, all those costs would be borne by the Water Authority in the study as it is now. Now, should there become a partnership? If a, if a partnership were identified, the parties would work together to assess what those costs would be and, uh, and then those would be identified at that time. But at this point, in Phase A, there were no costs associated with Borrego Springs.
That is, uh, quite a way to unbundle a very complicated question. Thank you so much, Kevin. We appreciate that. I do want to remind our listening audience that these studies are all available, including the one being discussed today, as well as some others on the San Diego County Water Authority's website. Our next question is, why does CWA review engineering viability and cost estimate as remotely providing economic viability? Isn't this an incomplete and relatively naive way to define economic viability?
I think that misses, misses what in fact was done in Phase A. What they did do in Phase A was say, let's consider using Met's history to forecast the future of an exchange agreement. So there was attempt to marry elements of the two alternative choices. As Bob and I have said today, uh, that's a good start, but that's, needs substantial further investigation.
Great, thank you. And talking about marrying up a few things here, we have a request from, uh, one of our listeners that relates to slide 14. They're asking if you can overlay the San Diego County Water Authority's rate increases during the same time period. I believe that is an overlay of what the Metropolitan Water District's rate increases were. Would you be willing to do that?
I certainly could do that. I would just have to do the work, but I, but since that's a question, that will be in our answers. That will be in our answers.
Perfect, thank you. Here's our next question. The Colorado River's annual flow is expected to diminish as much as 30% by 2050 due to climate change, and all of its water is currently spoken for. How did the consultants factor in the risk of there not being enough water in future decades? Is it not assured that SDCWA will need to pursue other sources and related infrastructure to make up for the drop in available water from the Colorado River? Or alternatively, will we not have to pay for demand management, buy and dry in areas of the Colorado River Basin? Were those potential costs factored into your study?
First of all, that's a really good question and that's a good example of what we talked about looking out into the future. Uh, that's, I have two, two aspects that, if you recall, I said, uh, it's important to keep tracking how well these studies about the future actually explain what's happening on the ground. But let's just assume for the purposes of my second point, that, that those projections prove to be correct. What that does then is put a, put a spotlight on the priority system on the Colorado River. And the spotlight is California has 4.4 million acre foot entitlement to the Colorado River. If California were to have a cut in that 4.4, Metropolitan is first in line to take the cut. If indeed the priority system remains in place, Metropolitan will have to take all the cut first before any of it goes into Priority Three. I know many people believe that that's not likely to happen, but history is interesting. In the 1990s, uh, Metropolitan retained a good buddy, uh, I didn't know him at the time, Paul Cunningham, to fly out from DC to argue for equitable apportionment, which was a, uh, DC word for let's get rid of the priority system. Uh, Metropolitan took a big swing at that ball and struck out in the 90s and, because the priority system remained in place. I would also point out that, again, water has some nuances. I would, uh, encourage the, uh, questioner to go look at the quantification settlement agreement and in particular the peace treaty provisions where it says, provided that IID meets its delivery obligations of conserved water, the federal government has agreed to stand down. I with Bill, uh, with, um, with, uh, DOJ, Department of Interior, uh, Bob Snow, negotiated the term sheet of the peace treaty, so I'm intimately aware with that. And so, so this, so the idea that, that, that the priority system may be overturned has always been conjectured about, but I think that's a long putt.
Yeah, and I would add too that, uh, it's, it's extremely unlikely and remote that the IID's, um, higher, high priority, um, would be cut. But if it, uh, is, and there are, there are things that are going on right now among the states on the, uh, the Colorado River, uh, to look at shortage sharing. Um, and if the IID were to receive a cut, uh, then within the, um, IID transfer agreement with the Water Authority, there is a shortage sharing provision. And, uh, when we looked at that, uh, years ago, um, the, uh, when they, you take the factor in how the cuts filter through, uh, it was my opinion then that they would not, even a, a large cut is, would not be significant on the Water Authority.
Having said all of that, I'm sure Bob agrees, that is an excellent question for Phase Two nonetheless.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you, Bob and Rodney. Our next question, uh, Bob and Rodney, I'm not sure, you may want to defer this to the Water Authority and their written responses, but for the sake of asking all the questions, um, there's a lot of effort to determine the MWD rates. Why don't you start now and negotiate a new exchange agreement with MWD? That way you'll find out SDCWA's costs.
Well, um, I've been, actually Bob and I negotiated the first exchange agreement in Metropolitan late 90s. The reason why I was in the room, there was a contractual provision that had to be satisfied in the IID Water Authority agreement. So IID tasked me to tag along with Bob to negotiate that with them. So I have firsthand experience dealing with Metropolitan. I think you always want to look at your alternatives and, um, and as a result, I view Phase B as helping you get a better sense of what your alternative is to Met, because that should influence what you'll prove to be successful. I noticed that actually the Authority came within a whisper of actually reaching an agreement with Metropolitan recently, where they accepted Metropolitan's offer provided that Metropolitan allow for a reset of the contract, uh, uh, payments under the revised exchange agreement, if indeed Metropolitan changed its rate structure. That was rejected by Metropolitan. So the way I look at those negotiations, um, uh, they got very close on the numbers. Their problem was that, uh, Metropolitan did not want to deal with a change in rate structure, which, uh, Bob and I, Bob and I actually negotiated in the, in the San Diego agreement, how contract prices would be, you know, determined if Met had indeed changed its rate structure. So what to do when any water agency changes rate structure is a significant question throughout the industry and Metropolitan just did not, at that time, want to step the table on that issue.
Our next question is, will Phase B get more real in terms of financial partnerships? And what would that look like? Maybe a MOU?
Uh, actually before you get to an MOU, you get to a term sheet, okay? So, so probably, uh, you know, uh, the work plan for Phase B would have to flesh that out, but normally one in the world starts with a term sheet before you get to an MOU. And that would be useful to get.
Okay. Um, how do you put an economic number on the intangible value of having ownership of the conveyance infrastructure to move the IID water?
Well, actually there's, could be a tangible, uh, so I'm just thinking about that adjective for a minute. I think what it is, is that if you have an understanding of what your financial risks are staying with Metropolitan, that is a tangible, you can quantify that, so it's a tangible benefit.
Thank you. Um, does the Authority still have access to MWD's water if we build our own delivery system?
It's, as long as they stay as a member agency, uh, they have access.
Yes, and I, and I might add, it is in the Authority's plans that, uh, as, um, uh, as, uh, the need for additional supplies grows over the long-term future, you're going to need more than just the QSA supplies and local supplies. There will need to be a buffer, uh, supply from MWD to handle, um, uh, changes and variations of, uh, water demands and any potential growth in the region. And so certainly there is a, a role for the Water Authority to continue to purchase supplemental water from MWD.
Thank you. Our next question is, um, it refers back to another study. Eighteen of the CWA's 24 member agencies commissioned an independent economic feasibility study. How did this study differ from the Phase A report?
I think we've answered this question before, but I, from my perspective, I think, uh, the two major issues were that, uh, that study wanted to, uh, look at a more limited time horizon than the Phase A study did. Um, and as I said, you want to look at the useful life of assets, which is for, uh, a capital intensive investment is really a long-term investment. And the second issue was that Phase A used history of Met to project future rates of Met. And that alternative study said, well, that can't last forever. So picking a time when that, when Met was going to turn around its financial future, they came up, different inputs, different outcomes.
Another question submitted by a member of the listening audience, says, risk factors require rigorous analysis. For CWA to justify spending $1.5 billion recently on local storage to assure continuance of service in case of supply disruption from MWD due to earthquakes, it must first have done a probabilistic risk assessment. Number one, what to CWA assess as a probability of supply disruption from MWD transported supplies due to earthquakes?
Uh, Bob and I have not been retained to do seismic risk analysis, so I do not know the answer.
I don't think we want economists doing seismic risk assessments. I'm just going to throw that out there.
I certainly wouldn't want to.
Another question from our, uh, listening audience, what happens to water allocation between MWD and SDCWA if Colorado River supplies decrease by 50% over the next 200 years? Uh, climate change was referenced as a financial risk to, uh, Alternative B. Is there a potential the infrastructure is, is provided, but there is no water left to convey?
I think the answer goes back to an earlier question where it's, it's all about the priority system and what's your expectations? Because if indeed the priority system remains, um, then, then again, the senior priority of IID would be insulating the Water Authority from those risks. Again, and I, I appreciate the question because it gives me an opportunity to add a few more points that I didn't before. The idea that you're going to overturn the priority system means you're going to war with agriculture in the West, okay? Or more generally, senior right holders in the West. So the idea that that would be a sort of isolated Southern California inside baseball game is, I think, foolish.
Our next question is, if, and this relates, uh, to an earlier one, I think they're asking you to expand a little bit upon your responses. If the IID decides not to continue the transfer agreement with SDCWA beyond 2047, how does this impact the many other QSA agreements?
Well, the canal lining continues till, till 2112. Um, actually it's been a while since I've read that, but I, but I think maybe even the, uh, the priority cap. I think the cap for 3-1 is for the term of the QSA. So, uh, the whole idea of the QSA and any related agreements was just get involved in solving a generation of legal disputes, okay? Between Met, Coachella, and IID, and San Luis Rey Tribe, and so on and so forth. And all these things were bundled together to say, the way we're able to close that, those agreements was we're all in this, we're all, let's all get in the same boat and float together. And if it falls apart, go back to fighting.
Yes, and I, I would add that the, um, uh, in the case of that, the, as Rod mentioned, the canal lining water does survive, that is 80,000 acre feet. Uh, that would, uh, continue to be conveyed. MWD is obligated, uh, to continue to convey that water by agreement, uh, through the term of the allocation agreement. And again, the, the only risk or big question is, what would that, that wheeling price be?
Thank you. Uh, I'm not sure we're privy to the information in the next question, but for the sake of asking all the questions, uh, someone asked, what discussions have been undertaken between CWA and IID in terms of extending agreement and for how long?
I certainly have not been involved in anything, so beats me.
No, neither have I.
Okay. Let's move on to our next question then, and we'll leave that one for the written response from the San Diego County Water Authority. We may later post the questions and the responses on their website. If SDCWA leaves MWD, is there a cost impact or a detrimental water flow use impact due to the reduction of water to MWD?
I'm a little puzzled by if the Authority were to I'm a little puzzled by if the authority were to leave MWD and linking that to Met losing water. That's, I don't, I don't see the link.
Okay, we'll need to ponder that one a little bit and, and get back to that one later. Okay, here's our next question from one of our listeners. Why not try to renegotiate the current agreement with MWD with more favorable terms to San Diego and use a proposed San Diego project as negotiating leverage?
Well, I think that's consistent with Stratocan's advice to all its clients to know your alternatives before you negotiate a deal.
Yes, and I would add that there, you know, there's risk on both sides. The MWD has an aqueduct that it's only, absent the QSA supplies that the Water Authority wheels, that aqueduct would be almost half-empty. And with the diminishing supplies on the Colorado River aqueduct, MWD runs the risk of having a stranded asset there. And so I think, you know, both, there's a great interest, I would think, on the part of MWD to want to avoid stranding an asset. And certainly, that would be a motivation, I think, for MWD to look at agreements with the Water Authority.
Thank you. I do want to remind our listening audience that you are more than welcome to submit questions online. You are looking at a slide that tells you exactly how to do that. We do have more questions here, but just to promise to everyone on behalf of the San Diego County Water Authority that all questions related to this topic will be addressed on their website, both the questions and the answers in the next few days. We encourage you to look there also. Our next question is, what would a 1% per year difference on the MWD rate projections do to the economic feasibility of this project?
Well, if, if the difference is a further increase of 1%, that would increase the economic viability of the RCS option. And if instead it's a 1 percentage point decline in the rate of increase, that would diminish the economic potential viability of the project.
Thank you. There's no expectation for a significant increase of water from the Colorado River. The MWD has sufficient transmission capacity to move all of SDCWA's IID water. So building the RCS would overbuild water transmission capacity. How can overbuilt transmission infrastructure be economically attractive?
If the cost of the new facility is less than the, the charge by Metropolitan for their facility.
Yeah, I'd have to, to add that the, the economics and the cost incentives drive, drive the deal. And if the price is, is too expensive, then the, the right thing or the smart thing would be to look at an alternative.
Great, thank you. A member of our audience is asking, why was storage not included in the first phase of the RCS study? And how can storage not be considered essential to transmission of the IID water to SDCWA?
Well, Kevin, why wasn't storage considered in the Phase A study?
So let me, let me see if I can answer that. There, there is a small amount of storage that is being considered in conjunction with IID, which would free up some canal, All-American Canal space to convey QSA flows through the All-American Canal. There's also some storage considered in San Diego County for Alternative 3A because we need to have storage up in the northern part of the, the county if we choose Alternative 3A. And for Alternative 5A and 5C, they both terminate at San Vicente, which is a large amount of storage.
And Kevin, while we have your attention, can you also comment on what is the useful economic life of an RCS pipeline?
Okay, I can. And the, so the RCS is a series of more than just a pipeline. It's canals, it's, there are some storage facilities in Alternative 3A, well, all the alternatives for, in the IID area. So most of those assets will have useful lives in excess of 75 years. In many cases, they're projected with modern technologies to be more like 100 years if they're properly maintained and they have certain key equipment replaced on, on a regular basis.
Thank you, Kevin. Rodney and Bob, back to you. What are the fatal flaws of owning?
Well, if you don't maintain your asset, it's sort of like if you don't service your car, you're, you know, you don't have reliable transportation. So I think it's certainly one of the things about ownership comes responsibility of management. And, and so to me, that's probably the largest potential fatal flaw.
Yeah, I'd, I'd probably flip that a little bit and look at the, the other side of the coin, what are the, the advantages of ownership? And it's the same reason that a lot of people decide to buy a house instead of continuing to lease an apartment. So again, at some point, when the mortgage is paid, you own an asset and you own something that has value and something that you control rather than having to depend upon another party to negotiate flexibility. When am I going to get received deliveries? Am I going to get shorted water? What's my price going to be? Is it going to, you know, continue to increase infinitesimally? So that's a lot of the reasons why people decide, even in their own personal finances, it's better to own than to lease.
Thank you. Our next listener has some out-of-the-box thinking and taking a different look at, at this with their next question. They ask, wouldn't it be more cost-effective and reliable to look to D-SAL, which has proven to be successful and can be staged as demand increases or decreases?
Certainly, that's an alternative to be considered, especially if you're looking forward. One of the challenges, I think, for D-SAL in California is going to be the preference of the regulatory authorities to move away from, you know, open intake and outfalls. So there's a change in economics of D-SAL. But on the other hand, we have to understand that D-SAL's gone through a pretty impressive record of innovation. The energy intensity of the technology today is much less than it was 20, 30 years ago. And certainly, if you look across the world into the Middle East, you know, D-SAL's an important part of that as well. I think the question, though, is, right now, the QSA is the base supply of the Water Authority and is likely to be much cheaper than D-SAL. So that may be an asset you want to keep in your long-term portfolio.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Thank you. This next question is for Rodney and for Kevin. What are the economic impacts of RCS on the Salton Sea?
Kevin, you want to go first since you did Phase A?
I can. So we did not assess the economic impacts, but we did evaluate a potential to send a brine stream that would come from the treatment plant located in Imperial Valley to the Salton Sea for either putting it directly into the sea or for use in restoration of some of the playas in the Salton Sea area. So whether it's positive or negative, we don't know at this point.
Yeah, the Salton Sea really has two fundamental challenges. One is, of course, the declining elevation of the sea, which is, the state asked, gosh, three years ago for study or for private groups to propose solutions for their consideration. I actually was a leader of one of those submissions. And of course, the other issue is the flinity issue of the sea. And right now, I'd have to say that if I was advising an authority about how to cut a deal with IID to extend an agreement, I would, I've already said, think about storage. And I think we have to think about how can you facilitate improvement at the Salton Sea at the same time.
I know Bob and Rodney, you have extensive experience working with and for water districts. This next question's going to tap that experience. If CWA was to try to renegotiate slash extend the, the exchange agreement with MWD, what concurrent efforts would be required with the QSA transfer agreement to ensure there is a cost-effective product to transport?
Well, actually, the agreements between IID and the authority are in place. The existing exchange agreement is part of the QSA, that's in place. So I think the questioner must be thinking beyond 2047, okay? In, in that question. And there, I think you're just up to looking, the authority has to look at its two alternatives of the rent versus own. And then, it's funny in the world, what I've found is, the best way to negotiate with people is to talk to them.
So we've talked about the conveyance. What about the projected water cost from IID after 2047?
Well, the pricing of IID water after 2047 would be determined by the mutually agreed extension. So that's to be, that's to be negotiated.
Okay, thank you. This one's for Rodney and for Kevin. You mentioned partnership opportunities with Borrego Springs landowners. What would be the nature of those partnerships?
Kevin, since you were Phase A, go first.
Yeah, so what the, the partnerships that we identified would be that we could, we use the conveyance system to convey water from a, a party, a third party, to Borrego Springs through the regional conveyance system. And so we would basically, the, the regional conveyance system would provide a conduit for that water transfer. So that was the extent of the potential partnership that we identified. No, no other detail was really provided.
Yes, I think as Bob has indicated, the QSA, and I agree with this, QSA supply is a baseload of the Water Authority. So I think they were providing an opportunity to a community. If we have this facility, we're putting through here, there may be opportunities that can expand your alternatives. One of the reasons why I stopped representing IID and when I did is I was spending time in Texas developing a regional pipeline project there outside of San Antonio. One of the first things we did is I went all up and down Highway 90 to all the small communities to get a sense of their challenges, of their own water problems, and how our project could possibly help become a partner. So I view this as sort of a pretty standard thing you do in a major infrastructure project. You reach out to the parties you pass and see how you can help.
This next question, I think, kind of is something economists are familiar with, so we'll just jump right in there. Could you speak to the risk of projecting out water rates and infrastructure decisions 27 to 92 years in the future? Like any forecasting effort, the farther into the future we predict, the more inaccurate it will be. Are we overcompensating for perceived costs that may not materialize?
Well, first of all, let me agree with the general proposition. The further out you forecast, the more, the larger the dispersion of the forecast. What you need to do is think about, what is your risk management strategy about those forecasts? I have an opportunity to go back to my Texas project. Very early in the development of that project, I retained Goldman Sachs as my project financier. And one of the things that I talked to them about, geez, I'm going to sit down in San Antonio and negotiate an agreement. Don't go out and build, build a lot of, buy a lot of steel to produce our, our infrastructure, and that's a price risk. And of course, Goldman Sachs says, we can hedge that for you through trading. So what you need to do is, as you identify your risks and quantify your risks, then you have to start thinking about how do you manage those risks? And that's part of a risk management strategy.
Yes, and I would add with regard to the MWD rate, and yes, it is challenging to look out another 90 years, but we can look at what is on the books that MWD is potentially committing to or will have to, to do in the case of certain actions. A lot of those we identified on the, the slide about the key drivers that could affect MWD rates. But clearly, MWD is facing an extension of their state water contract. And there, again, you've got an aging infrastructure on the state water project. They're going to be doing a lot of asset management programs. They've got a two- or three-year study right now that they're involved in to identify those, so we will know what the scope of that is in the future, in the near term. We also have a, what is a significant aqueduct land subsidence problem on the state water project. And again, the, the swap is doing a, a study of how to address that, and they're looking at alternatives and what the costs are. But again, those are things that we will know. And obviously, the big elephant in the room is the $16 billion Delta Conveyance Project. And where that's going to go and when it's going to be constructed, and that's potentially being looked at further out into the future as things delay more and more, which is only going to drive up the cost of that project. But again, there are things that we, that are known, costs known, that we can look at as future drivers. So we're not driving, we're not navigating this whole thing in the dark.
Yeah, if I just may add to that, a couple of things. One is, under the existing exchange agreement, Metropolitan will pile on to the exchange rate under that agreement, the cost Bob's talking about.
Yes.
So that, that's the link and it's important that everyone understands. We're talking about Metropolitan generally. The reason why we do that is because under the form of the existing exchange agreement, these things flow into price increases the authority has to pay Metropolitan. And that's the fundamental point that we hope we, people understand.
Yeah, and I would add again, that, that cost is, is not insignificant for the Water Authority. Proportionally, the Water Authority's cost share with its exchange deliveries at MWD is 25%. So they're, they're looking at picking up a quarter of these future costs of MWD through that exchange agreement.
Excellent, thank you, Bob and Rodney. Just a reminder to our listening audience, we still have just a little over 10 minutes for you to submit your questions, although we do not have time to get to every question. The San Diego County Water Authority has promised to put all questions submitted during this session on their website with responses. Just give them a few days to get those up there, but we want to make sure that everyone has access to all the information shared today. And they'll also be putting a recording of this session up there as well. Our next question from a listener is, is there no chance at all the state will impose rent control on MWD's wheeling rates in the future?
Based on my experience, which only goes back 30 years, I don't think the state's going to put rent controls on Metropolitan's wheeling rate.
Well, it is true that the Metropolitan is a, a creature of the state. It was the state that created the Metropolitan Water District Act. But in the 50 years of my experience in having been, worked at Met and, and looking at the history since 1970, few changes really occur in that Metropolitan Water District Act. And so the, the likelihood of that, Metropolitan does have a significant representation in the legislature with its population and is a very formidable adversary in getting, in being able to diffuse changes to its act. And of course, they are not regulated by a public utility commission, and so the, And of course, they are not regulated by a public utility commission, and so the likelihood of there being any rent control on MWD is very de minimis, I believe.
Thank you. Our next question is, a listener says that they are not familiar with the financial vehicles to own. What are the options? Rate increases to support municipal bonds, selling capacity? What are your thoughts on those?
I think those are the types of things to think about. You will either have to pay for, well, first of all, fundamentally, people will pay for what they have to use, right? And the method of payment may be, if the authority owns it exclusively, then indeed the authority will have to finance those costs through a finance program, which will probably include some form of debt structuring.
Let's just ask a question that all of us want to know, is what happens to our water bill?
Well, your water bill is, will continue to go up. So the question is, how will it continue to go up in the future? And if indeed owning is cheaper than renting, then your water bill's going to not go up as much as it will if you continue to rent.
Yes, and I might say that part of Phase B will be to look at the individual member agency impacts to their retail rate payers. And there are a lot of factors involved in looking at that. Agencies who are less dependent upon the Water Authority will, and buy less water, will have less of an impact to their retail rate payers proportionally to, opposed to, as opposed to agencies that are more dependent upon the Water Authority. So again, when you start to look at it proportionally, what happens to the water bill at the retail level, you have to look at those factors to see exactly, how much is my monthly water bill going to go up? And that would certainly be a part of Phase B.
So that begs the question, would partnerships lower that cost? And if so, how?
Well, I think partnerships would lower the cost, at least reasonable partnerships would lower the cost. And basically, the question would be, what are you trading through those partnerships? It's possible that if, for example, think of the storage issue, maybe there could be economies of scale in the storage so that the cost to the storage available to the authority will be less because of the fact they've entered into a partnership.
Thank you. Kevin, we're going to jump over to you. Will the IID infrastructure be fully analyzed to handle the extra volume of water needs at each delivery point? And then what happens if the system can't handle it?
Okay, so if you're talking about the IID infrastructure, then we're talking primarily about the All-American Canal. And we did coordinate with IID to determine that the QSA flows could pass through the All-American Canal if we provided operational storage on the west side of the west side main canal. And so that was an alternative that we chose to carry into the regional conveyance study and costed that out and provided O&amp;M. There was another alternative, should that not pan out, which would be to parallel the All-American Canal from the siphon to the west end of the All-American Canal. And so that would be another option, but it's a little bit more pricey.
Thank you. Our next question is a rather long one, so please bear with me. It says, a choice of whether to rent or own needs to be made across the whole context of water availability and cost to rate payers and taxpayers. There are a number of unmitorable, mitigable risks associated with the RCS when compared to one or more desalination plants and stormwater capture. A new desalination plant would be relatively immune to the anticipated impacts of climate change, particularly the anticipated decreased flows in the Colorado River, which may not be adequate even for senior holders of water rights. Additionally, earthquake risks associated transporting water from a locally cited desalination plant and stormwater capture facilities would be less than the risk associated with a conveyance system crossing multiple active fault lines. Desalinization and stormwater capture would have the added advantage over the proposed RCS by creating new fresh water for the system as opposed to simply rerouting the conveyance of existing water. Has CWA funded any studies comparing the projected risk-weighted return on invested capital on the 1 RCS 2, staying with MMD through 2012, an additional desalinization plant, and stormwater capture? It looks like 20 questions in this, one question here. How do the cost to water rate payers and taxpayers compare among the proposed RSA expanded desalinization capacity, stormwater capture, and any other options to deliver the same quantity of water to rate paying customers across San Diego County? And how do the costs compare to rate payers per acre foot of new water delivered, water that does not depend on certainly decreasing flows of the Colorado River? Pick one out of 20 of those questions. You may want to address Rodney and Bob. That's a bundled question.
First of all, I appreciate the statement of the questioner. I think what I'm going to extract from that is that I think as you're looking at alternatives to convey QSA water, I think the questioner is also asking for an assessment of the alternatives of the QSA water to these other sources. And I would say that for the authority, as I said earlier, they're going to have to extend their agreement with IID beyond 2047. And I think a lot of the things that are impounded in that statement are related to proposed alternatives to that. And I would say that that assessment of alternatives is always a good idea.
Yes, and I might add, as I said earlier in my presentation, the low lying fruit has already been picked. And so a lot of these alternatives that were mentioned, desalination and stormwater, again, you have to look at what will be the yields from programs like that and what will be the cost. And early on, in the Water Authority's approach to diversifying their water resources, the Water Authority did not want to put all of their eggs in one basket. This was in the early 90s. And so it was prudent to diversify their water resources and not put all their eggs in one basket. On the other hand, there is no future silver bullet that's going to replace any of the water supplies or needs going forward and answer, you know, what the future's going to look like. I think it's prudent for agencies to draw on an array of these potential things, looking at local resources, looking at, and having desalinization, as the Water Authority has done, looking at water transfers, looking at more additional storage, looking at the local projects, recycling. All of these things are necessary and are, they're being undertaken in the region, many of them by the member agencies at the Water Authority as well. So that's what you want to have. You want to have a diversified picture at the end of the day.
Thank you very much, Bob. I think we have time for one last question. This one goes out to Rodney and then Kevin. Could you discuss the extent of how a collateral energy component to the project, owning, could be incorporated to manage down rates?
Kevin, you go first?
Yeah, it's a really good question. And this really goes back to partnerships. One of the alternative partnerships that we identified was potentially working with energy providers to lower the energy costs. Energy costs comprise a large percentage of the O&amp;M costs, and those drive a lot of the economics of the RCS. So if you can lower the escalation rate of energy by even 1%, it has a significant impact. So private, public, private partnerships might be an option where you have an energy provider create, like I think Rod or Bob said earlier, a geothermal plant perhaps, or a combination of renewables and other existing assets that they have with a long-term rate that has an escalation rate that's very attractive. Or you could even do negotiated rates with other OTE, or other energy providers, such as IID or another investor-owned utility.
Yeah, I would say, if you look at the O&amp;M costs, as Kevin said, energy's a very important component of that. California is notorious for its high and escalating, increasing power rates, so that's where, as Bob's saying, probably there's some low hanging fruit there.
Well, that brings us to the end of our time together today. We want to give a great big thanks to our panelists. We've done an excellent job sharing their expertise. And of course, to our listening audience who gave us some great questions, some added insight to looking at this issue, which is a very complex issue, so we're very grateful for your questions. As a reminder, the Water Authority will be compiling written answers to questions pertaining to economics that were submitted today and posting them online. Everyone who participated in today's forum will be emailed a link when that document is posted. Our thanks to the San Diego County Water Authority for allowing members of the public to engage in this forum, and our thanks to all of you. Thank you.